Submitted bids were Brightview Landscape Services, Artistic Land Management Incorporated, and Somerset Landscape Maintenance. In your memo there, there is a breakdown of the price provided by the individual landscape companies. There are several of them there. Basically, I'll just defer to the bottom line, which is the total base bid lump sum from Brightview Landscape was $136,137.64. Artistic Land Management, $148,696. And Somerset Landscape at $143,698.49. In the city's budget, we had budgeted a total of $166,706 for these projects. We hadn't bid up for a number of years. We weren't quite sure how this was going to come in. But as you can see, it came into the city's advantage. We felt like we had some good numbers there, actually, from all three of the contractors that submitted. Based on the results coming in here, the city or the staff is recommending then that the bid be awarded to Brightview Landscape with the low bid and then the additional 15% in the event of change orders and unforeseen change orders that may come up, which is a total amount of $154,017.98. Now, this particular contract does not go into effect until October 1st. So the current contractor that we have, which is Somerset, by the way, will continue to maintain these sites until the end of September, in which case then this contract would come into effect. So if there are any questions, I would entertain any at this time.
I have a few. Is this paid in a lump sum?
It's paid on a monthly basis.
Okay.
So that total amount would be just divided by 12, and that's the amount that would be paid on a monthly basis.
Because we've kind of been comfortable with Somerset. We've had them for a while now. Have you seen what other, and I'm sorry that I didn't look through here, are they doing other, any other cities or anything now?
As far as Somerset or Brightview?
No, the one that you suggest going with.
The one that we're going with, Brightview, is a longstanding company. They used to be called Valleycrest years ago, and Valleycrest was very well-known. They did lots of landscaping along A.DOT freeways. They're very experienced. Brightview was actually the subcontractor, the landscape subcontractor on Flatiron Park. So they were the ones that installed that. So we are quite comfortable with them.
So they're East Valley, and they're familiar with us out here already?
Yes.
Because, yeah, when you've been with somebody that long, you kind of worry, are you going to go a step backwards? I know with our maintenance, we've gone through different companies and then not been happy, but so, okay.
I have one question. Brian, why do we not have any information behind the items?
So let's see.
So you're putting it all in the second nights already under the agenda exceptions?
Correct. And so I would like to propose that we start to put them on, all of them, but also go electronic, because then that way they're automatically there for you all, all the time, and it becomes a paper issue. And so we've chosen the, and I think, is Kathy, longstanding practice?
Yeah, well, no. It's put behind the agenda item proper, because that's what a previous council asked to have done. For a while, we were running them to the back of the work session item. Council said, previous mayor said, very confusing, so we attached it to the regular agenda item. So it's there. It's just not with the work session item. It's with the regular agenda item.
I just thought discussing it tonight, because tomorrow night, we don't discuss it, that.
I agree. I think it's more confusing to have it not here. Here's where we are, then just put a note, this was discussed yesterday, and it's back here.
Because, Nick, we didn't have what the bids were under this item here, but it's in the back of the book, but it's not with.
I see, okay.
So it's nothing about you or anything.
No, it's there. It's just not.
Yeah, it's just in tomorrow's.
So you now want to reverse and go back to the way it was done before? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, we're talking about it tonight.
One on Monday nights, yeah.
Or it wouldn't have been good to have a note with a little arrow that said, you know, in the, I mean, we found it. We were able to find it, but.
Yeah, in item for Tuesday night or whatever, but it's, if we're going to talk about it tonight, to me, it's easier if we have it here.
I will note. We could definitely do that.
Brian's point, if you look on the screen here, this is the work session, both, this is the electronic version, is attached on Monday night and Tuesday, just on the electronic version. So on your iPads, it would have shown up tonight.
So one of our coordinating organizations, MAG, just announced today, there's no more I'd like to get there.
Oh, absolutely.
So that, it's there, it's easy, it's links on both things, you got access to it quickly, and it saves the city money.
We have seen times, Brian, where our packets were that thick with paper for one item.
Right.
And so that is, I mean, that's a tremendous amount of, and then if you do it both nights or, you know, for both items, it's.
We certainly will start it right away. Kathy, if we can get those on.
Well, just let me know, because we've gone back and forth, back and forth, so.
Okay, we'll do.
In this moon section, in the front.
Just to make a note, my iPad weighs the same, no matter how thick the packet is. Try to bring it up.
We can do that, but I can't give you something that we don't receive from the department.
Mr. Mayor, I think we're off the agenda a bit.
Not really, I mean.
No, we are off the agenda.
We're talking about where this is in the book, so it isn't on the agenda.
We're talking about a process that should probably be brought back for a discussion item.
I think we can handle it from a staff.
We'd already got out there, so.
We got it.
But thank you for straightening us out again.
So Nick, we talked a little bit. There is, there are some citizens that are doing some watering that won't interfere with any of this, and just if you'll let that company know that that does happen, that those people do have permission to be out there helping.
Right, we will do that. We know that we have some folks that are volunteering to water the new trees, which they plan to do for about the first year that they're installed. Once we get past that first year, really shouldn't be necessary to do that. They should be fairly well-established. So unfortunately, we have a very hot, dry year, so if they make it through this year, they're going to be okay. But yes, we will, we will make the new landscape contractor aware that these individuals will be in there watering. That is not part of their responsibility to water, so.
Any more questions for Nick? And thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation and discussion on rejection of bids for representation of indigent defenders in the municipal court due to unresponsiveness and irregularities in the procurement process. Judge Hazel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable members of the council. There's actually two items, two and three, and I think they can be discussed together if it's okay with everyone. As the council knows, the court and the city are required to provide public defender services so those folks in our community cannot afford an attorney. And our state Supreme Court is pushing and adding groups of people to that list continually, so we're going to have to continue to provide more of those services. Recently, we went out for bid. We didn't get a lot of responses. One of them was how we posted it in the city website. Also, the bid notice had two different potential amounts to be paid based on what council action on final budget, and that may have led to some confusion. Anyway, we did not get enough bidders. I've discussed this with city management. What we want to do is reject the bids and then enter temporary or six-month contracts, which Mr. Stern has drafted upon council approval tomorrow, to extend the current contracts for six months and then rebid the process. And we plan to then actually put a link on the city court webpage where people can get that information and then make the proper bids and then come back to you at the end of the year with those new proposals. I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Does anyone have any questions? Then I think that's all we can do tonight.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
Presentation and discussion on fiscal year 2018-19 street maintenance plan. Shane.
Let me get it for you, Shane. Not this one. Hold on.
Joel likes paper.
That one?
He's already protesting for paper. We're going to have a battle.
Super. Thank you, Matt. Just so while we're waiting to get ready, Shane and Mike are getting lots of kudos around the community for the responsiveness and the good work that they're doing when people are having problems, so I want to thank your department for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, my name's Shane Kiesewald, Public Works Manager, so, yeah, most exciting topic here tonight. Thank you. I heard that applause. So street maintenance plan. So this is just our annual plan that comes before you each year to discuss. It's the preservation or street maintenance we look to do in the year, but then also it is having a degree of CIP projects to planning to go to construction in the fiscal year. So not necessarily just maintenance, but also including some of our new construction or construction projects that we look to turn dirt on in the fiscal, fiscal year. In doing so, I'll just touch base on our street condition assessment, how our current inventory looks like at the moment, which I try to do each year, and then also how we prioritize the projects that you'll see in the fiscal year plan. And I did give you an oversized hard copy map to look at, and my apologies to Council Member Barker if she doesn't have that map, but I did give a hard copy to Mr. Busby here, so we will get that to you.
Thank you.
As I've stated in the past, our street assets are our largest assets, oftentimes for a city as well as a county. So our assets out there, our horizontal assets, our streets, but then also our point assets, our traffic signal signs, we're over $200 million. That's almost a quarter of a billion dollars just within our city alone. So this is a big deal when it comes to taking a look at our streets. And the two pictures, or the picture that I have up there is a before picture and the after picture baseline, one of our larger reconstruction projects we had done this last fiscal year. So it's my time to show you that, hey, I was before you last year. I'll show you a few pictures that we did get something done this last year, if you aren't out there noticing it already.
Shane, can we ask questions as we go?
Sure can, sir. Go ahead.
I don't know about everybody else, but with corrective vision, it's sometimes tougher to see at night with headlights. If a road is not scheduled to be paved, can it still be striped better? Because there's a lot of places where I'm like wondering what lane I'm even in around town, and I notice that before I do, the road's falling apart, so.
Yes.
Is, can you do that with that?
Yes, that is possible, Mayor, and we are trying to do our best to do that. However.
You guys all go home at night, but we drive around at night, and we see that stuff.
And one thing you'll notice too, with some of these reconstruction projects, some of these more rural roads that are outside of the city limits that are, that lack some of the streetlights, we do try to put those raised pavement markers on, those reflectors. So that's a practice that we've started in the last few years to do more of, which should help.
You can imagine on the two, on the picture right there, how at nighttime, that one on the right's not going to show up.
Yes, correct. So back to the street condition assessment, our streets are evaluated per condition annually, some of the other assets, two to three years, just depending on the cycle. But when it comes to our streets, we're out there at least once a year, some assets even more than that, when it comes to some of our drainage structures, for example, making sure they stay, stay clear. Our streets are evaluated on those six main distresses, from fatigue or alligator cracking, which everybody knows, all the way to rideability, which everybody knows, if a street just isn't riding correctly. So those are the main assets that we look and track. We have a pavement management computer program that helps us prioritize, helps us compute the distresses that are gathered in the field. In addition to that, we have some other factors too, that we do look at too, when it comes to prioritizing, and I think I might have went forward. No, I didn't. And that has to do with, when it comes to public feedback, for example, looking at different complaints, that helps us prioritize as well. Also, street classification, it's a well-known fact that when it comes to arterial streets, they oftentimes take more money. The distresses show up that much faster on arterial streets, so when it comes to our spending, we're probably, our spending goes 70%, 60 to 70%, depending on a year on arterials versus residential. And everybody knows that when I say arterial, you often think of arterial blood, and arterial streets are the lifeblood when it comes to economy, emergency response, et cetera. So that's another thing that we look at when it comes to keeping, keeping the streets safe. Also connectivity, sometimes it just doesn't make sense to leave a few roads here or there untouched if we're doing some type of treatment to nearby streets, so we actually factor in that as well. Also, going up on that list there, that first one, the right treatment at the right time. And I also add to that, with the right money that you have. Sometimes we just cannot get to some streets at the right time due to some of our funding constraints, but theoretically, the right treatment at the right time is the key to success when it comes to a street maintenance program. And that's the illustration that I have there, right there, our remaining service life on this back, this last, last slide. We base our streets off of RSL, remaining service life, and we go by the, by the number 20. That's not necessarily years per se, but it's a number of measurement. Lot of roads within, within Arizona could last 20 years, however, if you aren't doing any maintenance at all, a lot of areas, those streets won't last 20 years, but, and average about 20, so that's sort of where that number is based off of. On that second bullet point, last year, our average RSL for our total street inventory was 13.08. We went down this last year to 12.41. That was expected, and the reason why is we put a lot of money towards reconstruction projects. That means the square yardage of pavement that we touched was smaller, so thus, that will impact the overall condition of the inventory. And I've talked about pavement enslavement in years past. That's where you really want to manage your inventory. You want to treat those roads at the right time. It's a lot cheaper treating a street with preservation maintenance at four or five dollars a square yard than paying over 40 to 60 dollars a square yard when it comes to reconstruction. You just, a lot of jurisdictions just cannot afford if they let too much of their pavement go into reconstruction. And we've been playing some catch-up for the last, ever since the Great Recession, essentially, we've been playing catch-up when it comes to some of our reconstruction projects, and we still have some streets out there that are in bad shape that we need to recon.
Shane, speaking of doing things at the right time, I know that monsoons, the rain can do tremendous damage. We're in as dry as I've ever seen it in my 30-some years of living here. Are there anything that, that this heat and dryness do, or is it actually no problem, other than dust?
The heat, dryness is probably good for our streets, so we're sort of lucky to agree. We didn't have a wet winter, because that usually accelerates the distresses when it comes to water, so water is the major, the most threat. However, the more sunny days that we have is one large distress we have that's called ravelling. You get a lot more oxidation with the sunlight in those areas that you have more sun than other parts of the country. So that is one distress that our streets do, are susceptible to, is that ravelling, where a lot of those fines aggregates on the top of the surface essentially get degraded, and they start, you can start seeing the surface get real bony and rough. That's because of the oxidation or the sunlight hitting the, hitting the pavement, and that's not necessarily due to the, to the moisture, but more of the sunlight. And just going back to that graph again, again, our RSL is 20. If you construct a street and don't have that right timing, essentially, you'd have to pay another 40 to 60 dollars to extend that life of another 20 years with the street. So the point here is what I'm trying to make with this blue line is if you pay two to four to five dollars a square yard up here, you could extend the life, you could double the life of your street. And this blue line right here could equal about 20, 30 dollars over the square yard for the lifetime of the street, where we'd have to pay additional 40 to 60. So you pay less than half by doing the right maintenance at the right time. So getting to the street maintenance plan, there is a lot of variables to this plan. So that map that I passed out to you are the projects that we're fairly confident that will be happening this next year. However, just like what the mayor said, climate has, if we get a lot of rain, those distresses could accelerate real fast. It could change the need of the street for the treatment, so I won't go out there and move forward with a, with a treatment if, for some reason, that street has gone beyond that treatment. And that's happened. That's happened quite a bit, where we wave off a project because we've missed the ideal window to do that project. So another variable too is, is a lot of the CIP projects, the new construction projects, are grant projects, so they are through the federal grant. A.DOT has to administer for us, so we are at the will of their schedule, at the will of their delays. So some of those projects, when it comes to, and I'll point those a little bit out here a little bit later, you know, we are at the will of A.DOT when it comes to some of that scheduling, that it's, it's out of our control. Moving on here, again, I gave you the hard copy of this map, and I give you a hard copy for a purpose too, because sometimes you guys get a lot of questions about what streets are coming where, so I hope this could serve as a guide to you. As a Public Works staff member, we will try to give you updates. If there are projects that are, just look like they are not going to happen, or some major delays, we will try to communicate that to you. But please, remember my disclaimer that I said, some of these projects may not happen if the environment changes or A.DOT decides to change the schedule on some of these projects.
And the color-coded map is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, getting into a little bit more detail here, preservation maintenance, there's some big, big projects when it comes to the preservation maintenance. One of the most notable is the Apache Trail. We overlaid that going back, I think, four or five years now. We have some of the reflective cracking, that we call it, from the old pavement underneath coming through, so it is getting to the point of being ideal to do some crack sealing, because we want to hurry up and get some sealant in those cracks, because like I said, the biggest threat is moisture, and moisture, of course, gets right into the base of the street through those cracks. So crack sealing is one of the best preservation maintenance or routine maintenance that we could do. So we need to get on that, so we don't have some of the same problems we had with the Apache Trail before, where if you don't fill the crack, it fills up with debris, and then they start the volcano. That's why we had such a rideability with the Apache Trail before we overlaid it last time, because we weren't hitting the right treatment, crack sealing at the right time, so we hope to learn from that and be more proactive with that. And then the fog seal, going back to what the mayor asked about dry weather, the fog seal will help preserve the top of the pavement from the sunlight when it comes to that oxidation. Pavement works best when it stays flexible, so some of those preservation is to help keep that pavement flexible, and that's what that fog seal does.
Shane, real quick, can I ask you, go back to the crack seal real quick? That's where you guys follow the cracks and all the squiggly line? I get a lot of questions about that one, about why we do that.
And sometimes, one of the main questions I get is, hey, why aren't you out there crack sealing? I see cracks. Well, they have to be the right gauge. They have to be so big for the cracks seal to go down into, so that's why there's a, there's a right time even for cracks to fill them when needed. So that's another tidbit of information for you too. Another big project is Old West Highway. Lot of square yardage there on the Old West Highway, so that we're looking at a slurry seal, sort of an extension of what we did with some of those ma, major arterials that we did on Superstition and Broadway the last couple of years, extending that now. Old West Highway is next up with that, so we're looking at spring 2019 for that. Southern Avenue, Tomahawk Road, so that's just portions of Southern Avenue that didn't get hit this last year, as well as a portion of Tomahawk Road. I do have a patch that we need to get done in preparation for the slurry seal, so that's why you'll see some of the work in the fall, this, this fall, and then looking at to do the slurry seal in the spring of 2019. And then crack sealing, mainly with our in-house crews, but then also with, with contractor as well. So that's going to be in various locations, various times, usually in the fall/winter, when the cracks are the largest, because pavement actually shrinks in the, in the winter, and then expands when the, when it gets hot in the summertime, so you want to try to hit the cracks, usually in the cooler weather, when they're, when they're larger. Rehab project is a, one, one project we have that we're looking at, and that's Ironwood Drive. So we're looking to do asphalt concrete overlay, and that will be from Lost Dutchman up to McKellups. Some of you know that Idaho is in bad shape on that same stretch from Lost Dutchman to McKellups. However, we're waiting because we have some grants currently in play, and we're waiting to see how they come through that will help us really, you know, augment some of the monies that we really need to, to do that project, in addition to adding some additional curb gutter, as well as some bike lanes, which would be a great amenity going, especially going past Prospector Park up there. So that's the reason why, right now, we're waiting for Idaho Road, and our goal will be just trying to keep that road together till hopefully the beginning of fiscal year 20, to get that project, that road done. And when it comes to reconstruction, Pablo del Sol, this is a subdivision we did, started doing some improvements on maybe four or five years ago, and I think we used some CDBG and SSP monies. However, the qualifications for low moderate income has changed, so that, so that subdivision isn't a very good candidate anymore for those monies. However, if you want to pick some of the worst roads, travel the worst roads, go up in that subdivision, as well as Haven Hollow just south of there, they, they are in very bad shape, so we just recognize that we need to get in there and do, start doing something with those streets. So that would be a project that we look to do mostly in-house with, with our reconstruction, with our paving crew that we have. Some capital improvement projects, so this is a new construction. You guys probably have been on Delaware there, north of Apache Trail and Superstition. It's busy. There are storm drain planning to go in there, so a lot of utilities are being moved right now. There will be a break in between the utility relocation and the main construction project that probably is going to be closer to fall 2018. I just heard that today, that A.D.O.T.'s pushing that back a little bit, so that's probably going to be in the fall time of 2018 before that project actually begins, beyond what's happening out there now with the utility. The next one there, Superstition Boulevard, North Apache Trail, that's that roundabout. You guys have a front row seat to that going on there. After, after the holiday, holiday in July, that's where they look like they're going to be closing the intersection, possible detours happening at that time, so. And at that time, they're going to be really hitting it in earnest to try to get it done then going into this, this, this fall.
I called Kelly Townsend and told her to move her sign, because it's right in the way.
We'll get a lot of that.
Yeah.
Next one there on the list, Phelps Drive Channel. This is a drainage project, and that's another item on the agenda. I'll talk a little bit more detail here. I'm trying to get that project done ASAP, and I'll mention why here if you don't already know. Next one is Winchester Road and Southern Avenue. This is another grant project that's been in design for the last couple of years here, and I'm excited about this project, because it includes curb gutter sidewalk on both sides, Winchester from 16th to southern, and then also from southern, from Winchester to Royal Palm, and then also on the southern side of 16th Avenue, just west of Winchester. So we got a lot of pedestrian traffic around there, some higher number of residential units, so that's why I'm excited, because you'll get a lot of pedestrian facilities that we do not have in that area, as well as storm drain along Winchester. If you've driven in any of moderate rainstorms, you'll see a volume of water that shoots down Winchester and off some of those side streets coming out of Royal Palm, so we're definitely looking forward to that project. And looking like summer, fall 2018, again, I'm sort of waffling, because again, it's a A.D.O.T.-administered project, so we're sort of at their, at their will, but that's the current projection for start. Also, in the Grand View neighborhood, Main Drive, we've been doing some curb gutter and sidewalks within that neighborhood, working from our east going west, so Main is the next one up, so if everything goes good with related grants with that, that'll be about the same time, like we did Pell verde this next year, spring 2019. And then Southern Avenue improvement or widening, that will be from Delaware to approximately Ironwood, so that include curb gutter sidewalk, but also widening there. Ironwood, so that include curb gutter sidewalk, but also widening there, as well as a little bit of storm drain in there, in that area as well.
Shane, on the Main Drive project, since we've been working in that area, has there been a great improvement in the big lake that used to puddle there, has that been greatly improved?
That has been greatly improved back, I think we started some paving operations in there three years ago, so we did a change grade and got rid of that main bathtub we used to call it.
Kids don't have to canoe to their bus anymore.
Yep, so so far, that lake is gone and no more, however, there is some severe drainage issues that we are being careful, especially as we work our way west, once we get beyond Main, there's going to be some complication with working with some of those drainage issues there to the west.
But those residents sure were appreciative with that work being done, so thank you for that.
And I think that is pretty much it, so open to any questions, clarifications?
Is that the Great Pyramid of Giza in that picture?
Yeah, it's right in the back of our Public Works, that's what we were striving for, so that is a picture of the rock crushing that we got done this last fiscal year too, thanks to you, you folks with helping budget that project, turned out really well. We did use that recycle too to actually use as our aggregate for the portions of Southern and Broadway that we slurry sealed, and we were the first municipality in the region to actually be so proactive with recycled sand for a slurry seal on a major arterial, and I think it turned out great. And we saved over 20,000 some dollars by using our recycle for aggregate instead of virgin aggregate for that project, so I hope to use some more in the future with that.
Any more questions for Shane? And Shane, I think you're going to stay there, we're going to go on to the next one. Presentation and discussion on award of contract to Via Sun Corporation for improvements to Phelps Drive Drainage Channel.
Thank you, Mayor, again Shane Kiesewald, Public Works Manager, having to do with the Phelps Channel, this is a project identified in our street maintenance plan for fiscal year 19, before you hear relatively early, before the start of the fiscal year, and that's a significant reason why, because the monsoon rains are hopefully coming here soon. So this is a drainage project that, the current picture I have on there is the severe erosion and scouring that was existing there after last year's storms, we have it already starting to compromise the landscaping facilities there, also getting close to the sidewalk and undermining some even more expensive street facilities there, so that is prompting me to come before you, essentially before the money pass, to get approval to move forward with this, so the contractor could begin boom right out of the gate, early July, hopefully get it done before the monsoon rain.
Is this picture facing, when we look at it, it's facing north, so the street's on the, would be on the left side?
Yes, street would be on the left side, Broadway would be behind you.
So it's inching up towards the, yeah, you can't see that from the street, that's why I was asking.
Yep, good point, you can't quite see the sidewalk, sidewalk is just off to the left.
Lot of damage though, you know, from that picture, you can't see it when you're driving by it.
And then just a little bit further north, this is the existing channel, look how nice that is, that's what we hope to replicate from that point on all the way to Broadway, so it's not a very big gap, just a little ways we need to go to make that complete and to mitigate chances of further damage in that, in that area. Just anticipate the construction probably lasting a couple of weeks, we just don't know exactly how much fill, cut and fill needs to go in there, I anticipate that there's going to be some temporary closures to northbound Phelps, just as equipment is bringing in fill, concrete trucks bringing in the concrete, but just periodically, periodic closures, and again, this will be in early, or somewhere in July, hopefully no, later than early August for the work. And I have it, again, tomorrow night, just quick out of the gate, when it comes to the actual agreement, we do have a no funding clause in there, for some reason, if the money isn't budgeted, essentially, we're not obligated to move forward, so I just wanted to leave you with that and open it to any questions related to that.
I don't see any questions?
Phelps is just such a beautiful drive or walk or hike or bike, it's just so gorgeous, and then in the spring, when the trees bloom and the little shrubs blossom, it's just beautiful.
It was a TIF project that helped bring some wider sidewalks and some of the lighting and some of the extra trees and Pala Verde's there to help bring some of that, as we learned through the drizz, the little details matter, so.
And kudos to Parks too, Nick and Liz are still, they do a super job with helping maintain and been working with Nick too to help, you know, work out the solution there to get that erosion taken care of, so thanks to them too.
It sounds like we're ready to move on to the next Shane project. Presentation and discussion on an intergovernmental agreement with Pinell County allowing for the City of Apache Junction's participation in commercial driver license testing services.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, again Shane, Public Works, Shane Kiesewald, Public Works Manager, just switching gears here from streets to something somewhat related, but not. Over the last couple of years, you guys know I've been before you with a couple of different IGAs with Pinell County, it's been a goal of mine for the last 15 years that I've been here, a former director at that time who hired me said, hey Shane, we need to get closer relations with Pinell County, we need to have some existing IGAs with them to help become more efficient and coordinate a lot of stuff for the same joint citizens that we both serve, so. So in that spirit, here's another IGA, this one actually Pinell County approached because they've had some similar problems like we have with finding trainers when it comes to training our employees who are interested or need to, for somehow, for some reason, let their CDL lapse to get retrained, to get their recertification again. So what this means is, is the challenges that we've had is we've had some training, for example, the last training that we could find that was available was down in Eloy, so what we've had to do is send one of our 10-wheelers like that, which we have a few, and need to have a CDL operator to operate, we had to send the trainee as well as somebody who was certified, who had their CDL, down to Eloy along with the truck to get the training, so that's a big distance. And then some of the training that we had a few years before that, we had to go all the way out to Glendale to get the training. So this is something that's been a challenge for, you know, quite a few jurisdictions, so Pinell County, they're looking to actually get a contractor with the hopes of getting other partners into an IGA to help with the participation with this contractor, which will make the training much more local and consistent when it comes to pricing. And when it comes to consistent with pricing, that means I could plan for it, we could plan for it easier and budget more easily.
Can I ask why we haven't used the school district? They train the fire truck drivers, have we approached them?
I know we looked into it some years ago, but I think it has to do with, there's different classes of the CDL, A, B, and the CDL that we have are the A, B, and the school often trains on the C, which is the passenger, passenger ones?
Can we check on that?
Let's check on that, because the B is for bus and it would be for the dump trucks, anything that's not combination would be the B, and it might be a good partnership, so if we could check on that.
So is this on the consent agenda, is it too late to look into that?
Oh, no, no, I have this, probably earliest would be the 19th, so I got some time to look into it. And I'll talk to you on something in here too, I wanted to bring up, that this is not an exclusive contract, so if I do find some other opportunities, it doesn't mean we have to use the IGA with Pinell County, so if I do find something closer, especially even cheaper, you know, we are allowed to do that per the contract. And we've worked quite closely with the schools and stuff too, so definitely be interested to follow up with them. Let's see, and then just some of the rationale behind the IGA, which I just mentioned at the beginning, I just mentioned that, it's not exclusive, so if we signed into this, we don't have to necessarily use it, we could terminate anytime for any reason, just giving them a 30-day notice. It is a one-year IGA with automatic renewal that goes into perpetuity, so that's a good thing, so it doesn't necessarily sunset after 10 or 15 years and then we forget that, oh, we had IGA on that, so that's a good thing. So staff request, council authorization to move into the IGA, if I do come back June 19th, I will have the accompanying resolution that we need for IGA reconsideration, and in the meantime, I will definitely look into schools, see what options we have there, which, you know, they might have now, that might be open more to the city, so I'll find that out. Any other questions?
Any more questions? I think, I think that's it. Robin, no one has ever done the consent agenda by phone, you could be a first tomorrow. Okay.
Alrighty.
All right, all right, we are adjourned for tonight.